From the class of 2020, Juan Gonzalez Jr. To honor and remember him, we wore blue to school and to the football game last Friday. At that game, our football team beat South Brunswick 40 to 11, bringing their record to two and one. Our fall sport athletes are competing every day and working very hard. Schedules for all athletic teams are online and can be found on the district website.
Anthony, can I ask you to pause for one second? I'm getting messages from people at home that... All right, very good. Thank you.
After the complete renovation of the track and field, Lombardi Field was named Bob DiMarco Stadium after our Olbridge football coach for 33 years, Bob DiMarco. Thank you to the Board of Education for your continued support for Olbridge Athletics. Early this morning, the Student Senate Board met to talk about upcoming events. Our main goals for October are to have a club fair for each club to promote themselves and for students to give in, to get involved in all Olbridge has to offer. We're also committed to planning a traditional style pink out with the option to purchase pink beads, sunglasses, masks, and more. Looking ahead, we're also planning for homecoming to take place at the end of October. With that being said, we're doing everything we can to get back to where we were two years ago. And in that process, we're learning and we're finding great opportunities along the way. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Anthony. Okay, next up, we have recognition. Mr. Sididino.
Thank you. I'm going to go to the dais for recognition.
Okay.
Thank you. Our first recognition item is for GEICO Insurance of Olbridge. I don't know if there's a representative here. Thank you very much. Can you please come up and join us? Move the board to recognize GEICO Insurance Olbridge residents Eric and Gina Tomkowitz for their generous donation of 25 backpacks to be distributed to students in our Title I schools. The backpacks were donated by GEICO Insurance, and the supplies in each backpack were donated by Mr. and Mrs. Tomkowitz. Mr. Tomkowitz works at the GEICO office as a manager in New Jersey. Thank you so much, I'm not sure if the cameras can see, for your generous contribution and supporting our students who may have great need as we come back in person, and your donations really helped them. Beautiful backpacks. I was taking a look at them, so thank you so much on behalf of the community and the board. Thank you. Our second item is for one of our students who received his Eagle Scout. Move the board to recognize Riley Appleton. He is a 12th grader at Olbridge High School, and he completed his Eagle Scout project. Riley completed the beautification project of our paver patio and garden at the flagpole area at the high school. It's right outside this exit over here, if anyone wants to take a look at it. Riley, please come up. Riley, the high school administration and this board would like to present you with a certificate of recognition stating this recognition is hereby awarded to Riley Appleton for completion of the paver patio and garden around the Olbridge High School flagpole. The Eagle Scout project was dedicated to the alumni of Olbridge High School who have served or are serving currently in the military. Very prestigious honor, and we are very grateful for your recognizing our servicemen and women who have gone through Olbridge schools. Thank you so very much. I see you have your fellow scouts here with you. Do you want to say anything? Just answer me one question. Do you still have to take your project proposal, wrap it up in a grocery store bag, and drop it off in a mailbox on someone's, by someone's front porch? You still have to do that? No? Okay, I don't know. Some of the scouts may have to remember what that process was like, but thank you very much. Madam President, that concludes our recognition this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sididino. So can I have a motion to move recognition? Mr. Weber, can I have a second? Mr. Dunn? Okay, any discussion? Mr. Giordano?
Yes. As some of you know, I am an Eagle Scout, and my Eagle project took a lot of work and a lot of dedication, so I congratulate you for doing that. And for the rest of you, make sure you get started as soon as possible because high school is going to take a lot out of you, so get started as soon as you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam President?
Okay. Mr. Dunn?
I just want to recognize the Eagle Scout that was on this evening. Riley has been a staple in this community with all the Boy Scouts, and my son had the pleasure of being in the Cub Scouts with these fine young men. And I watched them grow up over the years, and I'm very proud of each and every one of them. They have done tremendous service to this community, and I'm proud to be part of, of, of the community that they, that they have been, been serving and, and coming from. And you know what? An Eagle Scout is, is, is a great accolade, but their parents also need to be commended for raising such great children. I know that one or two board members up here as well have sons who are Eagle Scouts, and they're very proud and very honorable parents. And you can't forget the parents in the kid's character and makeup. So thank you again, Riley. It's a pleasure. I know your parents are here. They should be applauded for the young man that you've become. Thank you.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes, thank you. It is a nice to see our scouts here, but it doesn't start until, begins with Cub Scouts. So I do want to recognize Mr. and Mrs. Tomkowitz for their, not only their generous donation today, but many years ago, Gina was my husband's sidekick as leaders of Cub Scout 129. So she has been serving for many years. It seems like it was just five years ago, but I think it was a little bit more than that. So thank you, Gina and Eric, for always, always giving back to our community. And so, yes, my son is also an Eagle Scout, so Riley and your family, I know what that takes to, to put that together. Back in the day, my son was one of those kids who dropped off a brown paper bag with everything and making sure everything was right, and the process is, is a lengthy process. So to do that while you're doing everything else at a high school level is extremely commendable. And my son now is in the Army, so thank you for recognizing our military.
Anyone else? Okay. Mrs. Kelly?
I don't want to sound redundant, but I do want to also thank Mr. and Mrs. Tomkowitz for their generous donation and congratulate Riley. I was, while I don't have sons, I do have daughters, and I was a scout leader for a time, so I do know the commitment that it takes. And to see, you see this through all the way to Eagle Scouts through 12th grade is very, very commendable. And I would like to congratulate you and your parents and your leaders as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, yes. Everything that they said is what I will say. You know, my, my kids did Scouts, and they did, they made it to, they, they made it through Cub Scouts. They went to Boy Scout, never made it to the Eagle Scout. They, they just didn't want to put the work in. It was too much work for them. So I, you know, kudos to, to you, Riley, for getting to that point because I know how much work it is. It's just a lot, a lot of work. And all you guys just really work so hard. I mean, I saw your badges, Riley. You're just like, you're loaded with badges, so good for you. Congratulations. It's a major feat. Gina, thank you so much. I'm so glad you were able to get in contact. I know that you had reached out to me, and we were playing phone tag a little bit, and then I, you know, so I'm so glad that you were able to, you know, get your donation in and glad to see that it happened. And I'm glad that you're here tonight. Thank you so much. So we need a roll call now for recognition.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Recognition one and two, Pat.
Excellent. Okay, now we move on to superintendent's report. Mr. Sididino?
Thank you, Madam President. The first thing I want to direct the public and the board to is the information that the district has posted on our district website. This is kind of our COVID tracking, data tracking network. It sits on the first page of the website, and there's a breakdown link in there, too. Just this way, there's transparency and the public can see almost... We try to update it three days a week and to keep the, the data real, so you know where we're at, and we know where we need to maintain so that we can keep this in-person going strong and keep the future of our district in-person moving in the right direction. So currently, and this was just updated as I sat down here, there, in the area of COVID positives, there are currently 50 students COVID positive in the entire district out of our over 8,000 students and four staff members. There are 161 students in quarantine and two staff members in quarantine. So some of the information that we have to know from the, from the outlook. When students are, we are using the CDC guidance that came out in early August so that when students in a K-12 setting, are in a classroom, in the classroom only, are sitting three feet apart with their mask on in a classroom for the entirety of that time, the student does not have to be quarantined. So if you're looking for a way to keep your child in school and to maintain the in-school experience, that's the, one of the best ways we can do it. Well, in the classroom, have their mask on, fit it right, and have it on during the entirety of the indoor session. If they go out for a mass break, obviously, and the outdoor activities, obviously, bacteria is, is a different story, but when in the classroom, have, have that on. When we started the school year on September the 9th, we started with 19 positives. So I don't want anyone to feel as though all of the positives started with, in school, that they've somehow contracted all of that with, since they've been in school. We started with 19 in, in school, and we have seen an increase of students with siblings. So if we're looking at, increasingly, we have a higher number at McDivitt than any of our other elementary schools. And McDivitt also has a number of the students, we looked at a number of siblings in Sandberg, which we have elevated numbers, but not so much at Salk. Sandberg actually has higher positives right now than the high school. All of our situations, we do, I mean, our nurses are doing a fantastic job in the schools with the contact tracing, staying on top of the information. Our, our Audrey Baker is currently out serving as our chief contact trace in the district. She works with Department of Health on these situations. When we see a cluster or concern, she brings it right to the Department of Health for their input. And one of the things that's changed from 2020 to 2021, there was a table on the recommendations, or I'm sorry, guidance for schools from the Department of Health that kind of told superintendents when they should consider closing schools. That has been removed. The authority to do so has been removed from the Department of Health as well. So from the superintendents by the Department of Health. So any situation in which we, you might see a cluster in a school, as we've seen in Robbinsville and West Milford school districts in this past week that forced them to go into remote learning on a temporary pause, that direction comes from the Department of Health, not from the superintendent locally here in Olbridge, not from the superintendents in those districts. So that's a, a big change that, that has occurred. What we are seeing, especially if you look at our staff data, that up until just this afternoon, we had only, let's see, two staff members that were in, in a school setting that were, that were positive. So four totally across the district in entirety of staff, only two that were in a school setting. So that shows you that our vaccinated staff are, are not showing up in the positives that we're seeing with many of our students. So to summarize, to keep our schools and our, and your children in president's schools, the more things, you know, have the masks on in the in-school person. If your family makes the decision to be vaccinated, it is one thing that we do not have to quarantine vaccinated individuals. So when we look at teams, teams that practice together, or a classroom, or a bus type of situation where we see a lot of our quarantining coming from buses, one of the first questions you'll be asked, and some of our parents aren't recognizing the question when it's stated to them and answered later, is that if, is your child vaccinated? If your child's vaccinated and they're close contact, they do not have to quarantine. So it's important information to have. Another item that we wanted to share, it was touched upon last week during the agenda session, is our open house for this year. We looked at having traditional open house. We looked at our current positivity rate, and we see that the benefit of having a remote platform will outweigh some of the risks that we saw. One of the things that we have learned through this pandemic is that with the Zoom platform, the Teams platform, it allows us to meet, see the surroundings, get information, share screens, see data better than we could in, in a live setting. So we think that'll benefit, benefit us. It'll also allow for us to not have to worry about social distancing in a classroom. It's one thing to socially, be socially distanced with 22 third graders, 22 sixth graders, but it becomes different when you're talking about inviting parents to open houses and making sure that everyone is socially distant. It's also becomes more challenging when not every family has a traditional family, that there may be multiple dads, multiple moms, and then you're saying, well, only one person per family can come so that we can socially distance. It becomes more difficult. In this format, you can invite the entire family to open house. Everyone can be part of the process to see what's going on in the classroom. Our teachers will be providing the open house within their classrooms. They will be doing it live. It won't be videotaped. You'll be able to hear their presentation, see the information that they're sharing, and then ask questions. And the other thing that we want to concern ourselves with is, you know, I don't want to have, be in this position where we have a lot of people coming into the classrooms. That should be a, a place where our students feel safe in learning, that we don't have to worry about, you know, was there a COVID positive case in there the night before on, at their desk? We want to make sure that everything we do is to keep our schools in-person and our students learning in-person as long as we can. We don't want to have to have our teachers policing who's wearing a mask and who's not wearing a mask. Sometimes I have meetings right here, and I can't get everyone in the audience to wear a mask. And we have police and security here. I don't want our teachers in the classrooms having to worry about everyone coming into the room, and are they wearing a mask, and to intervene if they're not. So at this point, we're going to maintain open house remotely as we look forward to conferences in the, in the fall. We'll see where we're at, we're at with that. We'll see where our data is at with that. But right now, for open house, it's going to be remote. Now for the good news. I do want to share information. How are we doing, Mr. Gudjuski?
I think we're good.
You think we're good? Okay, so we do have a little brief video presentation. It is brief, but Mr. Gudjuski and some surprise guests were able to put this together today. So I'd like the board to come down and take a look at the video, and we'll come back up.
Being named a National Blue Ribbon School is a pretty incredible accomplishment. It really solidifies the academic excellence that is built here by our staff and our families working together to help our students achieve their maximum potential. In order for a school to be awarded a blue ribbon, first of all, the state of New Jersey has to determine if you meet the qualifications. Sharaw met the qualifications based on our standardized testing scores. From there, you have to complete an application to support what makes you a strong school that succeeds in those standardized tests, whether it's through your community, whether it's through social learning or through academics. What makes Sharaw so unique is that we truly have created this blend of fostering social growth, helping our children to feel safe and comfortable at school, but at the same time, making sure that sense of comfort allows them to take risks, academic risks and challenges and rise to the occasion and truly think outside the box. And these boys and girls come to school every day with building their sense of creativity and at the same time, you know, working to become strong readers and writers and just being able to, like I said, rise to the occasion and rise to the challenge and go above and beyond.
The one thing that stands out in Sharaw Honor Gym School is that whenever we need, the whole community and staff comes together no matter what is going on in our lives.
A great part of our school community is the parent involvement. We have strong ties with Sharaw PTA and with SEPTA and all the parents really help build the class and teacher and home environment.
Hi guys, I'm Madison Peatman. And today, I'm going to tell you guys why we need to be kind at Sharaw because we need to let our heart know that we're all together and we're making sure that we're all safe and we need our community to be wealthy and kind.
Hi guys, my name is Afonza Malapo and I like Sharaw because all the teachers here are very nice and they teach us very nice subjects I never learned before.
Hi, my name is Andrika Vade and I like Sharaw because it spreads a very nice and positive message to people in different cities or in Sharaw.
It takes all of our Sharaw stakeholders to create this thriving and successful community. Our students put forth their best effort each and every day. Our staff is resilient and provides an atmosphere for all of our students to thrive. And our parents and our families come together to support us in every facet of what we need.
In order for a school to achieve such a high honor, it really has everyone working together. Everyone that is part of the school community, the students, the staff members, and the families, and the town as a whole. We have our staff members doing research and working hard on their own time to help find ways to help each individual student reach their potential. We also have families that are supporting our staff members at home, working with their children on homework or projects or studying for tests, and overall just trusting the staff that they know what is best and believing in our students and helping them just be
I do, hello? I do have with me today the principal from Sharaw School, Ms. Courtney Lowry, Ms. Lowry, please stand up. Just a little bit of background. So we had less than 24 hours to put that video together and I'm sure we can continue to work towards documenting the achievements of the staff, the students, and the parents in the community for Sharaw School and make something that will be a cornerstone of how we could do this in multiple schools going forward. A little bit about the process. There are 131,000 K to 12 schools in the entire United States. This year, 325 schools were selected for the National Blue Ribbon status. Of those in Old Bridge, Sharaw School is only one of nine in the state of New Jersey. The National Blue Ribbon process has been around since 1982. Schools have been eligible for this and it's not something you can apply for. It's not a, I want to be a Blue Ribbon School, so I'm going to fill out an application. You have to be selected based upon two areas. Exemplary high performing schools are among the state's highest performing schools as measured by the state assessment or nationally recognized norm test, and that's the reason why Sharaw School was selected. Or exemplary achievement gap closing are among the state's highest performing schools in closing achievement gaps between the school's groups and all students within that group. So since 1982, obviously, in the past four years, we've had two Blue Ribbon Schools. We're very proud of that and we look forward to more Blue Ribbon Schools in the future for our community and our schools. And when I talked to the students today and staff there, I told them the story about when I was in kindergarten and my grandfather first put me on my first roller coaster and I was a little teary eyed coming off it and he said, what are you upset about? And I said it was scary. He said, oh, life is scary. You're going to have ups and downs just like that. And I always remember him telling me that, you know? And at Sharaw, we started the beginning of the school year on a down slope, but I knew that we had an up, we had an upcoming and it wasn't something we could share. A few people from my administration, Ms. Lowry, we knew this announcement was coming, but the national school boards, I mean, National Blue Ribbon Society makes you keep that information quiet until today. So at 11 o'clock today, the Commissioner of Education put out the information and allowed us to share it. And before we could even share it with our own students and staff, NJ.com picked it up and ran a story and put it out there. So we had to kind of catch on to that tweet and send that information out there. But again, congratulations to everyone. It's not a one-year process. It's not something that you can accomplish by starting to work hard today. You had to start working hard many years ago. And students that are in the high school now were part of that process. Leaders that are no longer in the school are part of that process. And teachers who have been with us and some that have retired have been part of that process because it takes a while to get to that level of recognition. It doesn't happen with one year of good test scores. So congratulations to everyone. It's well deserved.
So thank you very much, Mr. Sittadino, and congratulations, Sharaw. Great job. Next, we're moving on to, any correspondence, Mr. Mayor? No. Special committee reports.
Yes, I have a special committee report. We had a curriculum meeting on July 28th. Dr. Turi reviewed the ESY and the Apex Summer Program, which ran during the summer, or the summer. The program serviced 931 students from July 2nd or 3rd when we started to mid-August. As part of the beginning of the 2021-22 school year, the district implemented a back-to-basic model to ensure a smooth start to the school year. This back-to-the-basic model will be implemented for the first four weeks or the whole, for the entire month of September. Dr. Turi reviewed the district's student assessment schedule from September until mid-October. The district-wide assessment will be implemented this year, including PSAT, IXL, ESA, CBM, COGATS, and Start Strong Assessment. A summary of this assessment will be sent to parents throughout the district through their normal channels. Mrs. Tevold provided a Board of Education on implementation of early college program that starts September 2022. Mrs. Tevold explained that the Old Bridge High School students will be provided the opportunity to pursue an Associate Arts degree at Middlesex County College. The first potential graduating class would be in 2026. Dr. Turi also reviewed district goals for implementing curriculum and examination of new curriculum resources, which will be discussed in future meetings. The next meeting will be held on October 14th at 7:00 PM in Zoom forum. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solikowski. Does anybody have any questions? Any comments? Okay. Okay. So now we are going to move to the hearing of the residents on agenda items only. If you would like to speak, if you have any questions or concerns regarding agenda items, please come to the podium, state your name, and address the specific agenda item that you are concerned with. Okay. Seeing no one. All right. I will close that portion of the meeting. Any course, any emails on agenda items? No emails? Okay. Now we move on to policy. We are going to present for first reading the following. So this is all just first reading. Does anybody have any questions on anything on policy?
Well, I have a comment.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes. So for anyone that doesn't realize it yet, this testing is basically a punishment for not bowing down to the altar of Jabbah and getting the vaccination, especially if you have medical and religious exemptions. And same thing with testing, some religions are against intrusive medical procedures. So just be prepared for that and get your lawyers ready if necessary.
Anything else? Okay. Curriculum professional development, we have items one through five. Can I have a motion?
Callie will move.
Thank you, Mrs. Callie. Can I have a second?
Burns will second.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Any discussion on curriculum professional development? Okay. Can I have a roll call, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions one through five pass.
Okay. We have athletics now. I need a motion to move item number one in athletics.
I'll move it.
Ms. Ellis Foster, can I have a second?
Dunn will second.
Mr. Dunn? Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolution one.
Okay. Now we have finance, resolutions one through 10. I need a motion?
Dunn will move finance, items one through 10, Madam President.
Mr. Dunn, can I have a second?
Callie will second.
Ms. Callie, thank you. Any discussion?
Yes. Separating, okay, this is batch one, or page one of one, 9035 for voting purposes. Separate that one. That's Jersey Central Power and Light. For voting purposes, you separated on both and I like to talk about the Jersey Central Power and Light one. How is it that at Salk, they used approximately $40,000 in electricity and at the high school, they use $45,000? The building's four or five times the size, something, I don't know what's wrong here, but I guess the bills are coming in, you have to pay them, but I'm going to question And Sandberg, which is also a large building...
Mr. Solikowski, last month you raised this issue also. And again, I just suggest that if you have a question about specific bills, I want to try to answer you in an informed way. And last month, you asked why the Over's High School bill was so high. And what happens with these bills is there are months where they're estimated, where the reader does not get in and the bill could be, and they get an estimated bill for $35,000 and then the following month, it's $52,000. So I think, you know, I can, you know, what I'll do at the next meeting, I'm going to bring all the bills with me and if they're estimated bills, I'll tell you what they're estimated bills. But in the high school, the annual cost for electricity is about $385,000, were consistent with what the cost is this year, what it was last year, and the year before that, and the year before that. So any one particular month, it could be skewed on the basis of us getting estimated bills in all of these buildings.
Okay. So you're saying it's an estimated bill?
It could be an estimated bill, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So that was for 9970. Now, did you...
I'm going to vote yes because we have to pay the bill, but I'm just questioning, you know, the quantity of electricity that these buildings are using.
All right. Did you want to discuss 9035?
Yes, I'm voting no.
I'm voting no on that one, that's all.
You're voting no? No discussion?
No discussion. I voted no on all the bills before that. Thank you.
Okay.
So you would vote separately on 9035, then vote separately on 9970, and then vote on the remainder of finance?
Okay. Mr. Mayor, can I have a motion on 9035?
Well, we already have the motions, so we're...
I'm sorry. Roll call.
On vendor 9035, which is Takarski and Milliman, the architect of record for the district, Mr. Giordano?
No.
Mr. Solikowski?
No.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Vendor 9035, Takarski and Milliman, those purchase orders pass. On vendor 9970, Jersey Central Power and Light, Mr. Giordano?
No.
Mr. Solikowski?
I changed my mind. No.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Vendor 9970, Jersey Central Power and Light bill passes. Now, everything else, resolutions one through 10, excluding 9035, vendor 9035 and 9970. Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions one through 10 pass. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Non-certificated personnel office, we have resolution number one. Can I have a motion, please?
Callie will move.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Ellis Foster, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Solikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolution one pass.
Okay. Non-certificated personnel operational, we have resolution number one. Motion, please?
I'll move it.
Ms. Ellis-Foster, can I have a second?
Callie will second.
Ms. Callie, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. DePrima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis-Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolution one pass.
All right. We have, next, we have non-certificated personnel other, resolutions one through 11. May I have a motion, please?
Burns will make the motion.
Ms. Burns, thank you. Can I have a second?
Dunn will second, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Any discussion?
Yes. Separating one for discussion, please.
Separating one? Oh, okay. All right. Any other discussion? Okay. Mr. Solakowski, would you like to...
Okay. Moved the board, approved the retirement of the following noon hour supervisors. This year, we appreciate for the dear years of service to the district. Donna, if I pronounce, mispronounce your name, I'm sorry, Miyeke. Congratulations and enjoy your retirement.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Solakowski. Any further discussion? Roll call, Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. DePrima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis-Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions one through 11 pass.
Thank you. On to certificated personnel, resolutions one through 12. Can I have a motion? I'm sorry, one through 11?
I'll move it.
Oh, sorry, it was written wrong. One through 11.
I'll move it.
Dunn will second.
Ms. Ellis-Foster and Mr. Dunn, thank you. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, was that Ms. Ellis-Foster or Ms. Burns?
Ms. Ellis-Foster and Mrs. Dunn.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. Roll call, Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. DePrima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis-Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
No for seven, yes for the rest.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions one through 11.
All right. All right. Non-certificated personnel transportation, resolutions one and two. Can I have a motion, please?
Dunn will move non-certificated personnel transportation, items one through two, Madam President.
Thank you.
Callie will second.
Mrs. Callie, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. DePrima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis-Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two.
Okay. Thank you. Transportation, resolution one. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move it.
Ms. Ellis-Foster, thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Ms. Callie, any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Ellis-Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. DePrima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolution one pass.
Thank you. Supplies, equipment, and services, one through four. Can I have a motion, please?
Callie will move.
Okay. Ms. Callie and Mr. Weber, any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis-Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. DePrima?
Yes. Yes, sorry.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions one through four.
Okay. Now, on to miscellaneous, one through three. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Weber, can I have a second?
Burns will second.
Ms. Burns, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. Prima?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis-Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I missed a second on that one.
Ms. Burns, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. So now, we have Board Secretary and Board Business. So I need a motion for one, two, and three?
Dunn will...
Yeah. A motion for one, two, and three, as amended at the beginning of the meeting. Can I have a motion?
Dunn will make a motion. Board Secretary and Board Business, items one, two, and three, Madam President.
Okay. Can I have a second?
Callie will second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, item number three. I was in the session that's being referred to here, and it was not my understanding that we came to a complete understanding to be voting on it tonight. We talked about it briefly, in terms of some of these goals should have quantitative ways to measuring progress. I don't know that there are any, and if there are not, I certainly would not go forward in voting for it, and I would urge the rest of the board not to as well.
Okay. Would anyone else, does anyone else have anything? Any other comments?
Madam President?
Yes.
Items one and two, I just want to sincerely thank my colleagues in the board for working with me to wordsmith and to liquefy the language in the resolution that was presented last month. Based upon our collaborative efforts, we found a suitable solution and language that the majority of the board can agree to, and I just want to express my sincere thanks again to the two or three members of the board who worked with me to get this established.
Anyone else?
Mr. Carroll?
Yes. Ms. Callie?
I too wanted to thank the several board members who worked together to come up with this version of the resolution. I feel that the objections of, that most of the board members had over the original language and some of the words in particular, and the tone have been ironed through, and I feel, and this was actually Mrs. Ellis-Foster's contribution, citing the state codes actually gives it a little bit more meaning, that we have the codes in there backing up our position, and it's a request rather than a demand, and we're not, you know, we're not getting overly political in the statement. That's it.
Okay. Anyone else? Ms. Ellis-Foster?
No. Thank you. Yeah, again, I just echo what Mr. Dunn and Mrs. Callie said, so I think, kind of shows in the spirit, we can work together. So I appreciate Mr. Dunn coming to this final agreement. And then also with the goals, I thought it was my understanding that the quantitative would be in the action plans, that would have the more detailed specifics, and I thought that's what we had discussed with the reps. So that was my understanding, and that the goals were a little broader, and that the action plan would be what would be more measured against and have some of that detail in there.
I think you're right, Ms. Ellis-Foster. I think that's what we had decided, to keep that quantitativeness in the, in the action plans. Mr. Weber, do you, do you remember that?
All I know is it's not in here now, and we're voting, I go forward on it, so I will vote no, because I don't, I don't believe, I believe we should have it in this part of the plan. And by the way, as a point of order, we allowed into the addendum under Board Secretary and Board Business, which we approved to be added to this agenda. Now, this does not appear to be the same wording that's in the one on a regular agenda, so I defer to our attorney as to which one will be the one that we're voting on. Yes, the addendum, as Mr. Dunn indicated, is the revised language, so you are being asked to vote on the addendum version of this language. Madam President, I'd like to say something, please?
Yes, Mr. DePrima.
If it's the will of my colleagues to pass this, I'm fine with that, but I'm not too thrilled with the first sentence. The Governor's Office regarding matters that affect the quality and delivery of education. Whether we agree with executive orders or not, I believe they're made with the best intentions of our students. Again, you know, we don't have to agree with it, but I'm sure they're made with the students, you know, first in mind. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. DePrima.
Mrs. Carroll, can I address Mr. DePrima's concern?
Yes.
Okay. I think if you look at the paragraph as a whole, we're asking that further executive orders are done in consultation with the local school boards before making any executive orders that affect the quality and delivery of education. Hmm? Okay.
Yeah, I have a few things.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes. So as many of you know, I did approve the original resolution, because I thought it went straight to the point and addressed the problem that was there. And now, even though this is filled with jargon and legalese to protect ourself and to not question our Supreme Leader, but I will also vote for this as well, because now it includes more executive orders, like the one passed about a day ago, where you're allowed to suffocate toddlers in daycare facilities. And before it gets brought up later, I just want to say, everything is political, you know, because everyone has a view on different policies. The problem is the parsonship. So before anyone tries to say anything about that, just remember the definitions. And yeah, just look at people like the governor who violated his own mandate when he was speaking out of school, but I doubt he's going to get charged with a disorderly persons offense. And look at the people that went to Obama's 60th birthday party. They were completely fine, no repercussions. And the people that were indoors at the Emmys, just remember that since they have more power and influence than you, they're allowed to break the rules, but your kids have to deal with these mandates. And lastly, with the district goals, I had a problem with hiring staff force that represents diversity, because to me, it seems like the focus would be hiring based on race, but I'll still prove it, because the rest of the district's goals were good. And that's, that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Can I just say one thing, just to, that diversity is more than just race, so that we wanted a diverse staff, and that means in not only race, but ability, disability, male, female, that our students can look at our teachers and our staff and see themselves in it. So I don't want to make it as simplistic as race, and I think that doesn't do it justice. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis-Foster. Anyone else? Okay. So with regards to the district goal, you know, I know that we did, Mr. Weber, I know we did have that discussion where you had brought up, or actually, Mr. Sididino had brought up, that you had asked for quantitative goals, and we did discuss it, and we did come to the conclusion that it was very difficult to have quantitative in the broad goal, and that we, you know, as Mrs. Ellis-Foster pointed out, that we would focus on them in our action plans. So it was really, it's really difficult to have a quantitative goal, you know, in some of these things, excellence in education, fiscal resilience, the whole child strategic planning. It's difficult to, you know, quantify that, but it's easier to have an action plan underneath and work, you know, in those little subheadings underneath. So, you know, I will vote to approve the district goals. With regard to the amended resolution, I want to thank Ms. Ellis-Foster and Ms. Callie for providing the new language, and for, and Mr. Dunn, thank you for accepting it, and, you know, you guys work very collaboratively together, and I appreciate that. I, Mr. DePrima said it nicely, you know, executive orders, especially this particular executive order, and the 100 or so that dealt with COVID, were specifically for public were specifically for public safety. They're not done to be the all-powerful totalitarian, whatever the word is. They're done for public safety. So while I do, I would like the governor's office to, you know, consult. I imagine that he did, I know he consulted with the Department of Education. He consulted with the American Academy of Pediatrics. He consulted with a lot of different people that are experts in the field before this executive order was placed. And it was done for public safety. So as much as I do, I appreciate the the language in this, the premise behind it, I'm still, I still object to. So I will not vote for it, but.
Mrs. De Carroll, I have a question on what you said. The way you're saying it, it implies that it is a specific resolution. I thought that was done away with. I, maybe I'm misunderstanding you.
No, 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 this is being general, but I'm saying executive, my, my point is executive orders, when they're done in general, are done with good intent. They're done because of public safety or whatever the reasons. There's what, 100 or so that pertain to the school, right, Mr. Parton?
Something about that, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so what I'm saying is if an executive order is done, it's to, it's for public safety or for whatever. Maybe you can clarify it a little bit, Mr. Parton.
The language of the executive order speaks about their intent. So not to interpret beyond that, yeah, they all speak in terms of reacting to, or all the COVID ones speak in terms of reacting to the situation that we're in. So the governor really speaks for himself in those documents. But yes, it does speak to public health and safety in his language.
Mrs. De Carroll, Chris, maybe you can answer this question first before I make my remarks. How long has the system been in place as it existed before the pandemic and we changed the order of who was in charge? Meaning where it was the people voting for the boards of education, the Board of Education being the next power group, then the administration. Correct? Obviously, it comes from the state for certain things.
Yeah, the, you mean, the administration has authority with regard to COVID?
Yeah, no, what I'm asking, in the state of New Jersey, has it been 75 years, 100 years that we've had the the protocol where it's been the state, then the electors will elect the board members in each, each board in the state?
Yeah, it's been at least 75 years.
Okay, so for 75 years, the Board of Education was the direct power that was given to the board by the people who elected them. During this pandemic, the governor chose to change that. Now, unfortunately, I think that shows, from my standpoint, it shows a lot that he doesn't seem to have a lot of confidence in the boards of education. And I think, I can't speak for all the boards in the state, but I think there were a lot of decisions here that this, this board should have had more input in that did not have it. So, and as far as the word about intentions, Mrs. De Carroll, I do remember a phrase, "The road to hell is paved with good intentions." I'm not saying that's always the case, but it does come to mind. So I will, I will not be, I will be voting to support this bill.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none.
So we're voting on?
You know what? So I think maybe we should, should we separate number two for voting? Because I'm, it doesn't matter.
So we're voting on resolution one, resolution two as amended, and number three. Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes, on one. Yes, on two.
Turn your mic off.
Yes, on one, yes, on two, and abstain on three.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Calley?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes, on one and three, no on two.
Okay, resolutions one, two, and three pass.
Okay. Now we move on to hearing of the residents for any school district issue. Once again, you can come up to the podium, just, you can, you don't have to raise your hand, you can just come on up. If more than one person wants to speak, you can, you know, stand over there and just state your name. And you can speak, you have five minutes. Oh, okay. And again, you have five minutes, and we'll try to give you, give some leeway, but we're gonna ask everybody to try to stick to the five minutes if possible. Thank you. Go ahead. Okay, can you hear me? Yeah. Is it on? Okay.
Hello, my name is Amanda Caffrey. I'm a resident of Old Bridge. I have two children that attend elementary school in Old Bridge, and I'm also a graduate of Old Bridge Schools. You may know me better as Amanda Lenning, if you knew me back then. So I'm here to talk to you about probably a ton of emails that were received about an independent audit of the district transportation. And before I talk about what that is and why we need it, I'm going to tell you a little bit about what happened with my daughter Rose. Okay? So Rose attends an elementary school and district in a general education kindergarten classroom. She is five years old, and she happens to have Down syndrome. Okay, so we had an IEP meeting that went wonderfully, right? Everything that our hopes and accommodations that were necessary for her to be in that general education classroom were there. And we're super excited because she's also attending the same school as her brother and all the other neighborhood children, right? People that we're friends with and we have playdates with and all the good stuff. So at the end of the meeting, her father had asked, you know, "Oh, okay, great, so Rose will take the bus with Patrick," right? And everyone's face has kind of changed. We knew something was going on, and we really weren't sure what it was. So we were advised that in Old Bridge Township Public Schools, they do not put a bus aid on a full-size bus. And at first, we were incredibly confused because that's really all Rosie needed, was a bus aid and a five-point harness seatbelt. And really, the assistance that the bus aid provides her is to close that seatbelt and open that seatbelt for her. Okay, she walks on the bus and off the bus herself. She attended preschool in Old Bridge, right? So we, I would walk her out to the bus pretty much every day. So we requested to have a meeting with Assistant Superintendent Tewey and the Director of Transportation to discuss this because we really just thought there was confusion. We know children in neighboring districts such as Manalapan and Marlborough and Rockaway, and I can keep going on and on, that have the same type of accommodations and ride the full-size bus with the other students at the bus stop, okay? Well, our meeting was, well, I will forward. Dr. Lombardi did attend our meeting, and in a transcript which we can share, said that she thought it was silly that two buses would go because Rose didn't really need to be segregated onto a separate school bus. Thought it was silly, so she reached out herself to find out why. And unfortunately, she was unable to override something that her superior put in writing. I'm going to read to you what was put in writing to us, okay? So on June 10th, we received an email from Assistant Superintendent Tewey in response to our request for him to attend a meeting, which was denied. And then, basically, after the conversation with Dr. Lombardi, I received this email. And I'm going to read you the part that's most troubling because it's really district policy that is forcing segregation for accommodations for accessibility for students with disabilities in the district. And I'm going to tell you that's a civil rights issue. It ignores the students' rights, it ignores the parents' rights, and there's ADE violations all over this. I mean, we really need to do better, but I'm going to read you what was put in writing to us. "In consultation with Ms. Steele, please see an additional response below. The district does not place aids on large buses for a number of reasons. The Old Bridge Department of Transportation allocates one seat on all vans to ensure proper supervision and safety of students for those vehicles." Okay? And it goes through to say, "There's concerns about evacuation." We reached out to the manufacturer of the five-point harness. They said any concerns around evacuation would be district negligence in training because they're made for full-size buses. There was concerns on here about how many steps Rose could walk. There's four steps on the bus. They are not angular, right? And really, none of it applied. So we tried to further discuss this. I'm going to show you. In response here, I quoted some of our.
Ms. Caffrey? We're at five minutes, so I'm going to allow you a little bit of leeway. Just try to wrap it up. I apologize, I'm sorry.
No, it's, no, it's fine, it's fine. It's a big issue, and I want to tell you guys that there's places where you can actually get the full details on what happened with Rose. But the long and short of it was, we received overwhelming support. You're sitting down. Nearly 20,000 people are in support of this, what we're asking for, an independent audit of our school district transportation. We need to know, we know it's bad, right? But we need to know how bad so that we can make measurable change. That's it. We want to work together, we want to collaborate with the Board of Education. But we really need you guys to approve this so that we have a starting point, and we can move from, from here to like top, top class. Great example for New Jersey and beyond. So I'm hoping that after you hear a little bit more about this, that that's where we land. This is not a confidential conversation that we're having right now. Super public and super necessary. So thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, my name is Melissa Caffrey. I am the stepmother of Patrick and Rose Caffrey, who are students at one of the Old Bridge Elementary Schools. Amanda did a great job explaining our story and what our family is going through. In a document, the question and answer on serving children with disabilities for eligible for transportation, question A3 states, "What are the strategies that can be used to provide that service?" There are four examples. One is expanding the ridership of small bus routes and integrating children with disabilities into general education bus routes. It says that districts should explore options for integrating children with disabilities with non-disabled students, especially when the children with disabilities are in the same location and have the same schedule as children without disabilities. This option may require the utilization of lift equipment vehicle for the regular routes or the addition of a monitor aid. Number two, using aids on buses. Many children with disabilities are able to ride the regular school bus with support provided by an aide who may be an instructional assistant or volunteer based on state and local policy. Number three, bus stop monitors, which could include going and waiting at the bus stop. And number four, positive behavioral support. Since starting school, Rose has once again proved that she is capable of meeting her goals and exceeding expectations. We have seen her go on and off the bus wonderfully and complete her school day without issues. We know that Rose's story is not unique. As Rose's parents, we are shocked that the Old Bridge Board, Old Bridge Public Schools are segregating students with disabilities away from their non-disabled peers in their transportation practices. We are calling on the Old Bridge Board of Education to have an independent audit completed on their district's transportation, specifically as it relates to students with disabilities accessing standard buses. Our children deserve better, and we will continue to fight for them.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Patty Caffrey, I'm Rosie's dad. Melissa and Amanda also done a great job explaining the situation. I'm really reaching out to everybody from, from my heart. I don't have much to say, but I just truly reaching out from my heart. We need a change to happen in our, in our, in our district, in our community with regards to segregation. There's no reason why a five-year-old child with a disability should be segregated, like a forced segregation, like there's absolutely no reason. From a child all the way through adulthood, segregation should not be an issue. Like, it's, it's dumbfounding. We really need you guys, Board of Education, to collaborate with us. And like, you guys are the vice of the students, so like, please hear out the vice of the parents. And the support that we've had is tremendous, like. The whole situation came about, and we were in an IEP meeting, and as Amanda explained, I just presumed that Rose is going to go on the same bus as her brother. I, for the coming weeks after, I was just confused. I thought there was like a total lack of communication, and there was some, like, really, really clear answer that people just weren't seeing. And unfortunately, as it went on, we realized there's so many children, or so many parents that have children in the district that have the exact same issues, and they've been reaching out to us, like, what do we do? So it's not, not an individual situation whatsoever. As Amanda said, we, like, we can work together, everybody in the community can work together and make Old Bridge School District the gold star district that other, other schools and, like, not just across New Jersey, across the nation. Like, we could really be the gold star standard for schools, especially with regards to being one. Like, we are, we are one in Old Bridge. One last thing I want to add, like, today at dinner, I asked Rosie, "How was your day at school today?" She said, "Good." I said, "Okay, what was your favorite part?" She said, "The bus." I couldn't believe it, like, there's no reason. She doesn't know everything that's going on, she just presumed she gets on the bus and gets off the bus. So she followed up on that with saying, "Big bus, not the little bus, silly daddy." Like, that's, they're, like, I'm quoting her exact words. And it was, it was pretty touching, given, given the data she said and everything. I, I really think we need an audit of our transportation policies. It just, we need to find a certain point and a measurable starting point so that we can be the best together. Yeah, I mean, I'd say it again, like, we need to eliminate any forced segregation in our community. It goes so much further than school, but like, school is really where it starts. That's pretty much it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Nicole DeAndrea. I have been a parent of students in Old Bridge Public Township Schools for about 14 years now. To say that I am disappointed over the last couple of years is an understatement with the pandemic, but again, unprecedented times, I know, and we are all trying our best. Unfortunately, I don't think that was the case this past weekend. On Friday, at approximately 2:00 PM, as Mr. Sinedino had explained before regarding quarantine, we were contacted, my husband and I were contacted, that our son, who is a student at one of the middle schools in Old Bridge, was exposed to COVID, and that he would need to quarantine for 14 days. He could return on Thursday, September 30th. Unfortunately, I was not able to take the call. I'm a healthcare administrator, I've been dealing with COVID since February 2020, and I felt that maybe I could ask some better questions, but we were not given, we were given very little information regarding the exposure. We just have some questions regarding the basis of quarantine. I know that recently, there's been new CDC guidance that has come out stating that children within three feet of each other, or more than three feet of each other, with a well-fitting mask do not have to quarantine. When asking my son where he sits on the bus, they sit in diagonal rows, and he sits by the window, and this other student sits by the window. To me, that's more than three feet. So if we're taking the word of 12- and 13-year-olds for our quarantine basis, then that's what I just need to know. Where do kids sit on the bus? Are there seating charts? And again, just, if masks work so well, then why are we quarantining? Not a lot of information, like I said, was given. It was, let's rush all these kids into the library together, put them in a COVID quarantine in the library. My son was picked up, and they said, "Everything would be fine, don't stress." Well, thank you. It's Friday at 2:00, and we have to put plans in place. I did receive an email that evening regarding the close contact, and then that my son would be provided home instruction. Unfortunately, I am familiar with home instruction because it's the same that a suspended student gets. Two hours of home instruction every day, and it's unacceptable. Why are we punishing our children that have to quarantine? The letter also stated that teachers will have no interactions between our quarantined students and the teacher. With this, with my son, with all the other children, but specifically my son and the children who have learning disabilities, how are we meeting their needs? Individual education plans are put into place with specific modifications. And if I can just give you some of the modifications that my son has, frequently check for understanding, additional time to complete classroom tests and quizzes, providing word banks for follow, for recall tests, allow for oral follow-up for students to expand on written responses, reading the test aloud, reading questions aloud. The list goes on and on, but he has more verbal modifications than anything else. So how do we allow our children to learn without that interaction between the teacher and the student? And I get it, it is difficult, I understand it. I, I am on, I'm on the same side as the teachers because it's not easy. But there is no remote learning option for our children. And my question is, as identified by the New Jersey Administrative Code for Special Education, how are we meeting those children's needs? How are their learning disabilities and their special education's needs being met through these IEPs that are developed with, with certain modifications in place? So come Monday morning, I took the day off of work, which, as a fully vaccinated person, I just recently recovered from COVID. And to say that it was not great, what is, is also an understatement. So I took the day off of work, I have absolutely no time left, so I took an unpaid day off of work so that I can help my son, who also, by the way, as a result of our last IEP meeting, he had a behavior plan put in place because he doesn't do well on remote. He doesn't turn his camera on. And we put a separate plan into place in order to implement a behavior plan for him. So I took the day off of work, I contacted the school, I started calling at 8:00, left several messages, and I got a call back from the secretary. The secretary, and I did not leave a message for the secretary, I did ask to speak to the principal or the vice-principal directly. I got a call back from the secretary, and she said, "No problem, we will take care of it." And now, in middle school, the first bell, I believe, is 8:30, 8:28 or 8:38. 9:04, my son's camera, my son's teacher's camera was still not on. None of these teachers had been made aware of what their responsibilities were in order to help these kids who are home instructing during quarantine. So again, just trying to have these answers so that I can help my child learn, I had to go back to work today. Thankfully, his case manager is wonderful, and she kept in contact with me all day. But we're putting, we're, now we're putting these teachers in a situation where we turn their camera, they turn their camera on, and they're supposed to just ignore our students who are on the other side and they're quarantined? It's basically a punishment? It's ridiculous, and we have to, we've had a long time to. And we have to, we've had a long time to fix this. Like I said, as a healthcare administrator, I have 95-year-old residents who have been in lockdown, and I've found a way to make it work, to engage them in activities, to meet their individualized care plans. We have to do better. We have to come together. We have to do better because this isn't going away. COVID isn't going anywhere. It's here to stay, and if we don't find a way to work with it, our children are doomed. And it's not on, it's on your hands.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ian Erickson. I have two sons that go to Jonas Salk. And I'm just here to tell a story that actually happened today. My wife got a call around noon time that my son had an asthma attack in gym. So she said, well, why, why did that happen? He said that he couldn't breathe because the mask was on his face. He couldn't take deep breaths. So now, she then called Mr. Sinedino's secretary. She talked, spoke with the seventh-grade administrator. They all said the same thing. Basically, I just have to advocate. So I'm here advocating for my son, who I have to decide if I want to send him to school tomorrow so he doesn't have to go through that trauma again. Someone has to do something about this. This is ridiculous. I have to decide if I keep my kid home, he doesn't go to school, he gets in trouble, or he goes to school and has another asthma attack and traumatized all over again. What do I do? Someone, seriously, what do I do? Do I send him to school with the mask on? Can he, and why are kids doing aerobic exercises with masks on in the first place? That nice video you showed, you saw, I saw kids with masks on doing jumping jacks. You shouldn't have masks on when they're doing aerobic activities. That's ridiculous. At least stop that. If you could do that, that would be great. Then I could send my kid to school tomorrow. Otherwise, I'm keeping him home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kristin Lepore. I have three students in the district, two in elementary school, one, one just starting middle school. Like Mrs. Andrea just, DeAndrea just spoke, my son got quarantined on Friday. Me and 30 other parents were standing there picking our children up. I get it. I understand it. But Monday morning comes, my son also has an IEP. Couple of his teachers were excellent, communicating, talking to him. Math, he's in gen ed. The teacher has a camera on, writing on the board, and all he sees is white. My son can't see anything she's doing. You can't learn math by just listening. You have to see. He writes to his teacher, I'm sorry, I can't see the board. Is there anything that you can do? She goes, she took a picture. Here you go. Well, that's not helpful for when she was explaining what was happening. But she didn't answer till she was done with her lesson. Same thing, I called the school, I speak to his case manager, and I said, I don't know what's going on. What's happening with his IEP? Are there any sort of accommodations happening for the kids with IEPs? And what I was told is there's no directives to help or accommodate kids with IEPs. That is absolutely unacceptable. Our children have IEPs for reasons. They need the extra help. My son's IEP was just updated in May of last year. These things are needed for him to excel and learn and thrive. But being on remote with no instruction, nothing, is, is ridiculous. The two hours a day, by 4:00, sitting in the class all day, not talking to people, but 4:00 to 6:00, then he can listen to, have a teacher talk to him? It's un, it's unacceptable. I understand why he's quarantined, which is fine. But if he's going to be home, he is, should be able to get a quality education. He should be able to have a conversation with his teacher. Today, again, the teacher moved the camera further away than it was the day before. I've now messaged the principal, and he said he'll have tech look at it tomorrow. But now that's two days of math that he has now missed. And when I, and I didn't get the letter with the link for him to go on for instruction at 4:00 until today. He's been out since Friday, I mean, Friday at 2:00. But there needs to be something done. Something has to happen. I'm not screaming. I'm not a crazy parent, but I'm just advocating for my kid. He needs help. He needs to be able to get the education that he's entitled to and the accommodations that he's entitled to to thrive in sixth grade. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Madeline Rodriguez. I'm here today to discuss situations that go on in the cafeteria and to figure out a way that we can keep these children safe. I work for Aramark, and I work in the middle, one of the middle schools. I have encountered quite a few situations where these children are not being safe. They're not, nobody's watching them. They're removing their mask. They're on top of each other. And we're supposed to be having teachers, principals, vice principals, watching the situation, making sure that these children are in, at a safe distance from each other, and it's not happening. It's gotten to the point where, you know, I've had to explain to the principal that these are unsafe conditions. I understand that during lunch, they have to remove their mask. But while they're online getting lunch, there should be somebody there supervising what they're doing and making sure that they're not so close in, in distance to each other. I addressed the situation with the principal on Monday. We had a situation where the line was, for one, one line, there's, we have two lines for lunch. One line was completely wrapped around to the window on the other side. I don't know whether you're familiar with Sandberg, but that, that's a long distance. When I went to the principal to address it, and I asked him if he can please have some of the students sit down because it, it just was out of control. And he said, well, they're up already. There's nothing I can do about it. I said, these are unsafe conditions. You have all these children on top of each other. We're supposed to be maintaining some type of distance and maintaining some type of order within the cafeteria. That's why they made the arrangements that they made as far as making sure that there was some children in the cafeteria, some children in the auditorium, some children in the library. But while they're online to get lunch, there's nobody watching what's going on. And it's making our jobs as workers within the cafeteria unsafe. It's making those children not be safe as well. There's a lot of situations that are going on. My daughter was sent home the other day, same situation. She had to be home. And the answer that I got as far as any type of instruction, I, I'm just hearing this now as far as what's going on with the homeschool instruction, but she had to be out for at least two days. When I asked the nurse, I said, is there going to be any type of learning going on? Nothing. Call the teachers, get in contact with them. We're doing all these things in order to make sure that our children are sitting three feet apart in the classroom, but we also need to make arrangements as to what we're going to do as far as the cafeteria. I understand these children haven't seen each other in a long time. But in order to make sure that these kids are safe, the teachers, the principal, the vice-principal, they have to make some type of plan so that we can make sure that everybody, it's, it's like almost making it seem like our jobs are not, we're not, we're not worthy of being safe because we're just cafeteria workers. We're lunch ladies. And the way that I was addressed that, that day from the principal was, it was just disgusting. I, I was looked at like, I don't know who you are. I don't have any interest in speaking to you. And I have, I have six employees in my, in my kitchen that are very, very hard workers. They do anything they can for the children. They go out of their way for the kids. And I don't think that our jobs are any less than anybody else's. We choose these jobs in order to make sure that these children are fed, and we do our best to do that. And I don't think this, this district looks at our cafeteria workers as having any, any type of worth. It's like, we're just there. We, we deal with conditions that, in, in our cafeteria, we have no air condition. We have no windows. We, we've been told for the past three years that we were going to get some type of air condition that we can put into our, our kitchen. It's not happening. We work under conditions, almost 80 degrees every day with masks on. Nobody worries about us. Never, ever addressed, ever said, you know what? These people work hard. We're never giving any, any type of acknowledgement. And I just think that, at this point, with these times, we need to do something in order to make sure that these children are safe, that we're safe, and that we're taking into account that lunchtime is not that much different than classroom time. You can still get COVID when you're sitting at lunch. Doesn't matter. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Susan Finnamore. I work at Old Bridge High School and the cafeteria as well. Some of you may recognize me. I've been in the district working since 2012. Like Madeline said, this is the first year that as a food service worker, we feel like garbage. We feed the children of this district. Today, we had three registers for 800, almost, kids today. Five people prepped and put the food together. Yet we can't get any precautions taken to protect us, to protect the kids from themselves. Where COVID came in, I don't understand how lunch periods were lowered. GNC had three lunch periods. You lowered it to two. Two. If anything, add a lunch period so that there's less kids in each lunch period. The high school, we're at 800, 300, 800 in, for lunches. That's ridiculous. That's, that's absurd. How do you expect us to keep up with that considering that it's free? We were a staff of 17 in my school. We're down to six. We're asking, when's the faculty line going to be open? When is this going to be open? Are you, we're, we're barely getting everything done. And we're getting no respect, no help in the cafeteria itself, in the food service area. The kid, the, the food is free. The kids are still walking out. They don't even, they're trying to walk out. 30 kids probably walked out. And I know that the board gets the money. So we're not getting credit for a lot of kids that are just walking out. And it's just as simple as somebody standing by a door. We used to have the lunch mothers. You took that away, so the kids start stealing now. They're stealing even if it's free. And I, it's, it's crazy. What's going on is an absolute zoo in every cafeteria, every cafeteria. And, and I could speak on, on the school of Sandberg. That cafeteria goes 20 degrees, and I tempted because I was there as a cook, 20 degrees higher than the outside temperature. So if it's 60 degrees, those girls are working in 80 degrees. If it's 80 degrees, it's 100 degrees in that, in that service area. And we're killing ourselves, and we get no help, no respect. I've heard of other districts where teachers and the superintendent and principals came down to help in the food service area. I heard this. We are 17, 18, 19, I think, people short in the district right now. I don't know if everyone's aware. We are nine, almost, I think we're up to 19? 19 people short. And I haven't seen one face here. I haven't seen anybody come down to help us. And, but you're, you're expecting everything. You're getting the check, and we're getting nothing. We're exhausted. We're getting hurt. People are just quitting. They're just walking out right now. And the people that are staying are the people that are the, the people that love these kids. I've been with these kids. I know these kids since, since Cooper. And they're seniors now. They know me. They know my face. I know them from the eyes up, and they can't believe I recognize them. That's the only reason we're here. That's the only reason I'm here. That's the only reason why we stay. But we need respect from the people that have been elected to be part of this Board of Education. If you're not going to respect this, then nobody else is. And I'm tired of it.
Thank you.
Hi, hi. My name is Dee Verdi. I have two kids in elementary school here in third and fourth grade. And I had a couple of questions about quarantining after close contact. So on 9:15, around 11:30 AM, I got a call that my daughter, who's in fourth grade, had close contact with a COVID positive person. Come pick her up. Okay. So I go and pick her up. I'm told that she has to stay home for 14 days. Okay, no problem. Fortunately, I have, I have the option of working from home. If I didn't, obviously, I would have to take days off, or my husband would. But that's another conversation, right? Okay, so we have to do this 14-day quarantine. She comes home on Wednesday, 9:15, like, night, on the 15th. On the 18th or the 19th, I get a call from, and, and like, like a gentleman from the health department. He's a contact tracer. So he was just asking about if she has any symptoms, the normal questions that you would expect, you know, a contact tracer from the health department to ask. He did also let me know towards the end of the conversation that on day five, six, and seven of quarantine, if she is showing no symptoms and if she has a negative COVID test on day seven, quarantine is over. And I'm like, okay. And then I didn't understand that. I'm like, but I was told she has to do 14 days quarantine by the school. So it's raising questions, right? So I, I called the school. I got a chance to call them today. So I spoke to someone at the school. I spoke to the nurse, actually, at the school. And I told her my conversation with this individual, and she goes, no, that's wrong. It's 14-day quarantine, CDC mandated. And I'm like, okay. So then I go and try to do my own due diligence on Middlesex County NJ's website. Now, on that, I found a section called Schools and Child Care Centers. Underneath that, there's a, there's a, there's a, a section towards the bottom of that page called Helpful Links. In that, there's a PDF. Now, that PDF is called Quarantine Recommendations and Options. In that, it's very clearly listed out exactly what that man told me on the phone, which is the exact opposite of what I was told by the nurse. And when I narrated that conversation to the nurse, she's like, no, that's wrong information. But then when you go on the Middlesex County website, that's actually the right information. So what are we doing here? She's, like, according to the information that I read, she should be going back to school soon. But according to the school, she has to go back on the 30th. Now, let's talk about the remote instruction, if you want to call it that. There is no instruction until 10:40 AM for her, and lasts for an hour. And then another hour of instruction starts at 1:40 PM. So by like 2:30, she's done. I understand that this is the beginning of school, so it's a lot of, you know, going over assessment and things like that. But if this was the middle of the school year, my child would not be learning a thing because of the things that other, other people here have mentioned. So I, I, I think it's very important to understand what are the quarantine rules? Because what I'm reading, this man that called me from the health department is saying one thing, which is matching what is on Middle, Middlesex County website, but is very different from what I'm hearing from the school. So I don't know where we're going with this. So I think it's very important for you all to come to a consensus, what are we doing? Because my school, this school is not, I don't know if all schools are like that, but it's not following what's written on the website. So that was what I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Debbie Finnegan. I have, my older son just started kindergarten this fall. And first of all, I want to just say thank you to Mr. Carrow, Ms. Burns, Ms. Ellis Foster, and Ms. Calley for consistently being voices of reason during the pandemic. Also, the superintendent, and for, you know, listening to public health experts. I'm a registered nurse, and the experience, these last two weeks of my son being, starting elementary school, you know, I'm used to sort of a controlled environment in the hospital where I work. Masks are always worn. It's very easy to enforce. You know, the school environment is very different. I'm getting used to that. I wanted to ask, though, about air conditioning because I was a little dismayed about the situation with masks last Thursday when it was in the 90s. And, you know, understandably, the, the mask requirement was loose. And, you know, understandably, the mask requirement was loosened, and I think probably most of the kids in my son's class didn't wear them. You know, it's kind of like, if it's not safe to be without masks in normal temperatures, then why is it okay to pack in twenty-two, five-year-olds in one room, just three feet apart with no masks because it's ninety degrees outside? I understand that this, you know, none of that is your fault. But it did bring up this, the fact that, you know, air conditioning usually is kind of a luxury. But sometimes it's more than, it's actually more important than that. You know, it caused us to to really put the kids at risk that one day when it was really hot. And also listening to what some of the people who work in the cafeterias were just saying, you know, it sounds like, you know, it's more than just a luxury to have air conditioning in certain times when there's a pandemic and when people are working in difficult hot conditions in a kitchen. I know there are serious budget difficulties, but I'm just curious about what would have to happen in order to be able to put air conditioning in all of the schools. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Alena Francisco, and I have two children in elementary school. And just bear with me, I'm reading notes off a very small print on my phone, so I'm going to do the best that I can. I realize that you are all hearing concern after concern, but maybe this should be a general sign of how parents are feeling in regards to district actions and decisions. I have a couple of topics that I just have some things to say and also some questions that I hope you can shed some light on. The first being transportation. I'm sure you have heard many frustrations from other parents. However, I feel that if you continue to hear them, you will realize how widespread this issue is. I understand that the beginning of the school year can bring busing challenges. Every year always does. And I will admit that I was spoiled with the most amazing bus driver for the past five years. She retired. But this year is a drastic difference. The mornings have been improving, but the afternoons are still super late. Do you have an explanation for this? I have heard that Sandberg is running late, and obviously, it's a complete domino effect. Help me and many other parents understand exactly what the issues are here. My second topic, home instruction. Besides the fact that the current plan of a student being able to watch their teacher with no interaction is completely unacceptable, let's discuss how we are supporting the grade level teachers that are doing the home instruction. Will teachers be sharing lesson plans and assignments with the home instructors? Imagine you are that teacher and you have multiple children on home instruction, in let's say, fourth grade, who are on different topics, pages in a book, stories that they're reading, novels, the list goes on. How are they supposed to effectively support our students who are quarantined? I personally spoke to one of these teachers who was quite frustrated and worried about how they could do the best job they could. And to protect this person's privacy, I won't say what she was actually told, but let me be clear, it wasn't promising. And the last topic I'd like to speak on is back to school night. Mr. Sidedino, you explained the reasons for a virtual open house. However, I'm wondering why there wasn't a survey to get input from the community regarding this event? Wouldn't it have been a more inclusive decision if you asked families if they preferred sending one guardian versus going completely virtual? Most of the time, it's only one parent anyway. So to me, that isn't a very valid point. In addition, there are kindergarten and first grade, probably sixth grade and ninth grade parents, who have never seen the inside of their children's classroom or the school at all. Put yourself in their shoes for a moment. Could you imagine sending your very young child to school each day not knowing what the layout of their little world is? There's a lot that's happening in this district with little to no input from the parents. I understand that you have to survey us every sixty days. However, there are many specific decisions that we could and should be a part of, this being a perfect example. Thank you for listening, and I hope that you can shed light on these issues and fight to make them better. Our children deserve better.
Thank you.
Andrew Lewis, President of the OBEA. I wanted to continue what everyone's saying, but do so by applauding our staff across the district for their dedication to the successful or somewhat successful reopening of our schools. Despite some hiccups, reopening schools for a full day of in-person instruction after eighteen months is not an easy task. Our secretaries, technology staff, field and maintenance employees have worked throughout the summer to prepare our buildings for students and staff. Our transportation personnel have worked tirelessly to ensure our students may get to and from school each day despite a national bus driver shortage. Our teachers and paraprofessionals eagerly welcome students and have successfully navigated educating them through a pandemic. And our school nurses, in addition to all that they do for our students, now have the added responsibilities of contact tracing and collecting vaccination records from faculty and staff. And the staff at Sharaw School has endured the additional challenges related to the reopening of their building. This year is our third year educating students and working through a pandemic. Thank you to everybody who has made the start of the school year despite the challenges that we all face successful. And I just want to address two other things. The executive order pertaining to masks. Our students and staff wear them all day, throughout the whole day. As elected officials, you are setting an example for our students and staff. And if you can't properly wear one for two hours, I'm not sure what message that sends to our community, to our students who are doing the right thing all day, every day.
Why don't you ask the governor the same question?
And I want to end, excuse me, this is my time. Thank you. I want to end by sharing that the Olbridge Education Association is hosting a vaccination clinic at Olbridge High School on October first. We're committed to educating our students in the most healthy and safe environment possible. So if you are eligible and interested, I would encourage you to get vaccinated here on October first from three to six PM. It's open to staff, eligible students, and members of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. I'm sorry. Anyone else? Okay.
My name is Jody Andrew. I have a couple of kids in school. All I want to say is whoever doesn't have an N95 mask on, it's useless, even though the box already says it's useless. Also, term limits. Without term limits, these people don't care. Need term limits for this level only up to the highest level of politics, or nothing will ever get done without term limits. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. At this time, I am going to close the hearing of the residents. Any emails? Mr. Mara? Okay. So, Mr. Sidedino, do you have any comments?
Mr. Sidedino? Just before you answer, some of the comments, which are obviously incredibly important comments, some of them can't be discussed or answered at this point by board members. Dave, if you want to speak generally and answer the concerns, talk about logistics, that's fine. Board members, we cannot engage in a public discussion regardless of if the parents did or not. Their rights are different than yours. We're not going to talk about any individual child's program. And as far as claims of lack of safety, things like that, if we want to discuss that, we can certainly discuss that in executive session, but that is something that pertains to student safety, and we cannot discuss that in public unless we have a consensus and direction for the superintendent. I know that's incredibly frustrating and a very lawyer thing to say, but that's where we are. I'm sorry, Dave, go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you to everyone who spoke. It's a lot of information. I did take notes, and if I don't touch upon everything that you requested discussed, please direct your questions to me via email. Spend a great deal of the day responding to parents, either email or through phone calls back to them. You know, the discussion about quarantining, there's a lot of information and misinformation there about about quarantining. So the, one of the questions come up is whether the fourteen days or how that equates to usually about ten school days if it's over the course of two weeks. But there's the question of, is there a test-out period? Testing out was an option through most of the summer. When the region that we sit in turned over from yellow to orange, and you can go on the Department of Health website matrix for that, that changes the guidance that we receive from the Department of Health. So at that point, when we turn into an, to an orange, and I can refer you to, and if the parent that asked that question emails me, I can direct you directly to the page, but it's pretty simplified. I just Google all the time, Department of Health Guidance for Schools. And you look at the chart, there's a chart on page twelve, and it's color-coded, low-risk, moderate-risk, high-risk. We're in high risk right now based upon the matrix that the State Department of Health uses for our region. And in that section, it changes over from close contacts of COVID-19 cases aren't, who are not fully vaccinated should be excluded for fourteen days from the date of the last contact. If you look at yellow, what you're saying is true. So the Department of Health, and they have contact tracers that they've recently, recently hired, I don't know, I always speak to them, I know my nurse and I, we have frequent contact with the lead of the Middlesex County Department of Health. And again, they have an employee shortage as well. They've tried to hire contact tracers, and many of these people have no healthcare experience in the background. They'll be hired just to go through the process, call you, ask you questions, and relay information. So if there's some misinformation that they're receiving, giving out yellow data to an orange region. And again, I don't know if they are from the State Department of Health, and because there are some regions still in the state that are still yellow. So they may be looking at, if they're calling into a different region that's a yellow, that the information they're giving is correct. If they're calling from, into a region that's orange, then information is incorrect. So as we look at, you know, the home instruction model, do we want to employ this that we have? No. Do we, we wish that there was a remote option? It would surely be helpful. But if there was a remote option, do I have enough staff to ma, to manage that remote option? I don't believe that's sustainable. We are at a staffing shortage everywhere from the classroom to transportation to noon hour supervisors. We've had job fairs. We've been posting it. We're trying through, going through temp agencies and services, cannot find people to work. We're about, and I know Aramark had stated, the employee from Aramark said there are nineteen people short. We're more than that short from our noon hour supervisors. And the positions that we removed, we replaced them going into this, in this year because of COVID. And we haven't been able to replace many of those. We receive, if you can go through the, the agenda, there are resignations and retirements every day on there. And as we hire a noon hour supervisor, we lose two the next day. We have multiple teaching staff members who have retired or resigned within the first few days of September that we're still looking, here we are in entering the third week of school, and you see on the agenda, we're still hiring people. We just cannot find enough people to fill these positions. So that when we look at the limitations that are provided to us by not having a remote option through the, through gubernatorial action, that we can't have that, we have to rely upon our own policy. So policy states that we have a home instruction model. Our home instruction model, and this is for every health condition, and I'm not using a disciplined health condition, if you look in our policy that's on the, the board website, it talks about health conditions. And that can be everything from mononucleosis to illnesses in which children are hospitalized and have a serious illness. The policy is still the same, that in there, we have, they have to be absent for ten days before we can provide home instruction. And by the fifth day, we have to provide a method of home instruction. The difference is, what we're able to do with the staffing that we have is that we, our policies, you know, it's not a written policy, but it is our goal to do it as soon as possible. Not saying you have to wait ten days to be absent, as the policy states, for COVIDs and positives and quarantines. We want to get you the services provided as soon as possible. We've had, again, this is the ninth day of school, eighth day of school, and a hundred and sixty-one quarantines. That is just under the size of Grissom School. We have a whole school of students who are in quarantine, and assigning someone to do it when a policy, we have ten days to do it, is a challenge, and we're trying to do it as soon as, as possible. The policy also does not have remote access into a camera. When we looked at that, we said, we can't have students that are home for fourteen days, which is probably about ten days of school, and that could happen twice over a whole entire school year, and have them to rely on a home instruction model alone, which is two hours a day every to ten days, ten hours a week. But again, that's what students with leukemia get, that's what students with mononucleosis get, you know, and students with strep don't get that. You're just out sick when you're out for less than ten days. So we tried to find something that we could do so these students will at least be connected, but it will still be sustainable for our teachers in the classroom because you can't be, that's not sustainable model that we had last year. When we had cohorts, maybe it was a little more sustainable when you only had four, five students in the classroom. When you have twenty students in a classroom and two students and a camera, just to, to provide instruction at both levels is not sustainable, especially the way our teachers were doing it last year. They did a magnificent job because they were really teaching on the computer. The documents, the data was on the computer. But that's not sustainable for the students who are sitting in the classroom. So we are trying to modify a policy that exists and to make it better by, again, having the access. That's something that our policy does not talk about, that does not allow access to, to allow our students to at least see what's going on in the classroom to the best level possible. Will it get better? I hope so. But then again, that's all going to rely upon everyone doing their part so we do not have to quarantine as many, and we do not have as many positives as it can escalate to when we really truly get into the respiratory illness season. We are going to, again, it shouldn't be an issue, there's no limit on how many people we can assign to do this work after school, we just, as many people who want to do it. And again, they, their, our staff is working hard during the course of day. They have their, their own children and families to deal with from four to six, and not everybody wants to do it. We can go through our Kelly services, temp services, trying to get anyone we can to do it. But again, across the board, it's not just in education. Staffing is a real problem right now in everywhere. And again, it was touched upon in transportation. We are trying to make improvements in, in that area. But again, we are down in transportation. We have a lot of new people working in transportation from our contract services providers, and we are going to continue to work with them. One of the things we talked about today was trying to make it easier for our transportation workers to get a CDL license, something we can do here in Olbridge possibly to recruit people looking for that kind of work. So there are plans in place to try to make that better. Again, we've been having job fairs since last year. Some of the questions that came up were in direct relationship to air conditioning. When I first became superintendent, and I think Mr. Mara was the BA at the time, we, working with the board that we had at the time, commissioned a study to see what air conditioning would cost across the district. And the study came back with just the elementary numbers, just to put air conditioning on the second floor of all of the elementary schools was twenty-seven million dollars. There was little to no support of that expenditure at the time. We are continuing to revisit that. We, we talked about in the goals you saw earlier, strategic planning for our facilities to update and upgrade our facilities. I'd imagine that number, and that was, again, was just the second floor of the elementary schools. I'd imagine that that number will increase exponentially from that twenty-seven million to two thousand twenty-one where we are now, with the cost of materials and everything in construction as they've gone up. And we hope that we can do something in that vein, but that will rely upon the support of the public, supporting an initiative of that kind of expenditure. The back to school night, again, I, I apologize if it's not a collective decision, but in many venues of my jobs, safety is not a collective conversation. When I'm talking about that I have a shortage of staff and every time a staff member's out, I cannot find people to fill in that position, the greatest risk I can have is to invite people into the classrooms, I don't know if they're vaccinated or unvaccinated, to come into the classrooms who aren't there on a regular basis, and I lose staff right afterwards. That risk is not worth the reward of being able to in live see what's going on in the classroom when you can do it remotely, when you, the teacher can give you a when you can do it remotely, when you, the teacher can give you a very good tour of what goes on in the classroom, what the desks look like, what the cubbies look like, what the, the whiteboard looks like, everything that you can get from that, that kind of technology. If the courts systems of today are allowing court proceedings to go on through remotely, I'm sure that we can have an open house remotely and still have it work to justify its means. The Aramark employees, I'm sorry that you had to come here tonight to, to feel that you had to be heard. I wish that you had been heard earlier. I will schedule a meeting with your management tomorrow to discuss some of the concerns that you brought up, some of the staffing issues and some of the things that we can do to maybe help recruit staff for you. You know, to have, to be short almost 10 people. You said you had 17 people, you now have six people in a kitchen serving our staff. It's again, something else that's not sustainable. You can't go on working that way, that, that short of people. So whatever we can do to try to help with that. And the air conditioning piece is something, you know, that again, we're going to be exploring, looking in the future. But the question that came up when we talked about the expenditure, it was like nine years ago, was that's an awful lot of money to spend on two months. Because that's what the public felt at the time, that it's a June and September problem and not a, a problem for the rest of the months. So if the public support is for that, as we look at a strategic plan, hopefully we can make improvements in that area. And some of those improvements will begin when I meet with Aramark as soon as possible. Dr. Tuohy, did you want to touch upon any of the IEP concerns with the home instruction model?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. I will be addressing any of the modifications and accommodations issues that were brought up tonight with the child study team tomorrow, Thursday Septa meeting that will be at seven o'clock at Glenn School, if you're interested in attending, shameless plug. Seven o'clock Glenn School, Septa meeting this upcoming Thursday. There will be an update at that time and then it will be in writing as part of the presentation to be put on district website on Friday. Combinations and modifications should be addressed within the asynchronous activities that your students are receiving. If that's not occurring, please reach out to your case manager and I will address those issues as they do come up. Thank you.
Lastly, Ms. Francisco, on the piece about transportation and the lateness on a particular bus. I spoke to Transportation Director today. We were trying to identify where the, the delay is and where's the, where's the bus arriving late? And where does it starting from to make that better? We've had our own veteran drivers take over the route to try to improve upon it. And if it's not, if it hasn't gotten better at that point, then I asked them for tomorrow to give me a timestamp every time a bus arrives at a school and leaves a school to see where the delay is in the boarding of the buses. Thank you. Oh, there was a question about-
Jim?
The phys ed, yes. There's a memo that went out to phys ed staff in, in the spring of last year. It still, it still pertains that when students are doing aerobic activity and whether inside or outside and can maintain social distancing, that the students have the option to remove a mask. I will make sure our, our supervisor, our director of athletics and physical education shares that memo again.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything to add to Mr. Sittadino's comments before we get to old business?
Well, yeah, a few things. Thank you all for, everyone that came for the let Rosie ride. I did bring up the issue last week. I waited till the very end. I thought it would be discussed by the administration publicly. But I got a lot of emails, we all got a lot of emails, so I thought the issue should have been brought publicly. And personally, when it come, when I view segregation, it's pretty cut and dry whether you're segregated or not. So I personally would not think that an audit is necessary. We should focus on working together and trying to fix the problems. Because we, we already know they exist. We don't need to go through them. And I've been against, same thing, since May of 2020, I've been against the house arrest of students for getting sick, which we've never done for Ebola, swine flu or other things like that. And I'm glad to see parents are waking up to this. And as we see, when you're doing physical activity, the mask prevents you from breathing oxygen. So obviously, when you're in a resting setting, you're not breathing oxygen, which is required by humans. Yeah, unfortunately, this is going to be around for a long time because they're going to keep pushing new variants and things of that nature. And, and I'm, don't misinterpret me, like we all know someone that has been seriously affected or died from COVID. But we're talking about students that are 18 and under. And fact check me on this, but I'm pretty sure more students have died of suicide than COVID. And what else do I have to say? Yes, we had games at Lombardi outside and we're going to have Old Bridge Day this Saturday. And unfortunately, many people believe that you can't catch viruses outside, you can only catch them inside. But that's a separate issue. And we also know that if it's 90 degrees outside, masks are necessary inside. So once again, people are convinced that COVID has a temperature that it either affects you or doesn't affect you. And I just have to do this as an example, so please don't shoot me to protect myself. But by me going like this, I do not have COVID, COVID doesn't magically appear in my body. And I'm still asymptomatic and all students would agree with that too. And that's it. If I miss anything, it'll come in new business or you could email me about it if I missed anything. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to add that the Septa meeting is unfortunately the same time as the Carl Sandberg Open House. So parents might not be able to make both. I don't know if you want to make arrangements another time or something. Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Burns.
Yes.
Anything else on the hearing of the residents before we get to old business?
Yes. I think that everybody who came to the microphone was, was heard. And I think one of the things that all of us should take into consideration, there's a big difference from last year in terms of some of the services that are being delivered this year. One of the big problems is when the, when the governor passed his mandate that said everyone will go back to school for five days and there will be no remote. This is done in an environment where there are already tremendous shortages of staffing throughout the state of New Jersey, not just in Old Bridge. So all of a sudden, we went from having two hours a week in class and all remote. And then we crept up and got more days and more time in. One thing I think can't be tolerated is anybody who has an IEP and they get into a situation with a quarantine of any kind, that has to be taken care of. And this is the kind of thing that we need the governor to hear. Because right now, the constraint comes from Trenton. It says, everybody has to be in school five days and it says, there is going to be no remote. So that's the fight that everybody that's sitting up here in every district in the state is having. It's not just us.
Anyone else to comment on the hearing of the residents before we move to old business?
Madam President, real quick, I, I know that there's concern out there regarding transportation. And we haven't been afforded the opportunity to really have a operations and finance committee meeting. I think it's time for us to have one. We last had one when it was in May when we were discussing ionization and transportation issues. Now, since there's been new issues that have come to light for transportation, I think it'll be good for the committee to convene and allow the public to come into the committee and express their concerns. And we could start the dialogue that people are looking for, for various purposes. I think that when it's a intimate setting with the committee and with the public, we, we, we may be able to find some common ground and work to a solution. And I'm going to look to schedule an in-person meeting. I know that we have done virtual, but I will speak with the administration to see if we can have a in-person committee meeting. And I'm looking to have one set for the middle of October. I will disseminate the information through the administration and we'll, we'll have a meeting so we can discuss the concerns that are lingering out there in the public.
Thanks, Mr. Dunn. I definitely agree with you. I think we definitely are in desperate need of an operations committee meeting. So definitely, as soon as you can schedule that, I think that would be excellent. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so let's move on to old business. Any old business?
Mrs. Carroll?
Yes.
I don't know whether this qualifies as old business or new business. But you know, one of the things that we should be, excuse me, doing as board members is bringing concerns that we hear from the public and staff to light. And I don't know if Mr. Lewis is still here, but I wanted to thank him for bringing the topic up. It reminded me that I have heard from quite a few parents and quite a few staff members regarding the masking policy, not whether they're for it or whether they're against it. But they know, the parents, that their children, you know, it is an executive order that they have to be wearing masks in school. The teachers know that they have to wear the masks in school. The teachers are teaching for six plus hours a day. They're speaking to their students, not with microphones like we have here. Sometimes having to repeat themselves several times in order to be heard. But they know that they have to do it for the safety of the, the students and the safety of themselves. And also, it's an executive order. And I'm actually going to quote one of the statutes that we put in our resolution. And Mr. Lewis said, we're role models. And we, I do agree that we are role models. But besides being role models, we are required by state statute to uphold and enforce all laws, rules and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. With that in mind, I feel, again, as role models and what we are required to do under state statute, I agree with Mr. Lewis that we can sit up here for two, maybe three hours and wear our masks properly. I think it sets a bad example to our staff, to our students, to our parents, to anybody that attends these meetings to do otherwise. And I just wanted to bring forth to the board's attention that I have gotten several complaints from staff, teachers and parents. I did have a couple of other things.
Good.
On a lighter note, okay. I just wanted to congratulate Mrs. Lowry again, your staff, your students and your families. Great achievement, achieving a blue ribbon school. To young Mr. Toronto, thank you for the beads. It was a great surprise, purple and black, the knights are back. I have actually had the privilege of knowing you since before you were born. And then, if you remember, my younger daughter spent most of her elementary school years at your house, but you were a little young then. So I just wanted to welcome you to the board and tell you on a personal level that I'm very proud of you. I think that's it. That's all I have.
Okay, and I think we're on to new business now.
Oh, I wanted to say something.
I'm sorry?
Is it, wait, did somebody else-
Is this a good order?
You can go, no, we're still in old, well, we kind of blended from old business to new. It didn't look like anyone had any old business.
That's my fault. I'm sorry. I blended everything together.
That was fine. That was a little old, new. So does anybody have new business?
I think I have old, new business.
Okay, that's fine.
So first, Mr. Giadano, I just wanted to address the fact that you said that you were a scout. That's correct. So one of the tendencies of being a scout is trustworthy, loyal, and one of them is obedient. Obedient doesn't mean that you like the law, but it means that you obey the law and that you advocate for change through proper channels. So when removing your mask and advocating for change, please just be more mindful on, on how you do so. Speaking about advocating for change, I wanted to make a motion that we seek multiple bids or quotes, looking for prices on an independent audit that evaluates access to school events, activities and transportation for our special education students. Is there a second? I'd like to make a motion that we seek multiple quotes for prices for an independent audit that evaluates access to school events, activities and transportation for our special education students.
I'll second.
Okay.
Discussion?
Do we do discussion?
Yes, you would have discussion.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, there are many kinds of audit. There's an operational audit and there's a financial audit. An operational audit deals with what the service is, what you're going to quantify, what your expectation is, what the rest of the state is doing, all of those things. I may be wrong, but I believe that was the intent of some of the speakers rather than a financial audit.
Mrs. Burns, do you care to clarify that you're talking about an operational audit, not a financial audit?
It is an operational audit, but I would like to know the cost of what an independent audit would be.
Right.
So the first step before getting the audit would be to find out how much it is. And by obtaining multiple quotes, we could see how much it might cost or possibly get a grant. So if we look at avenues of cost, that might be, hopefully moving down the road.
The end product that you're proposing is a operational audit.
Correct.
Just to make sure everybody knows what they're voting on.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I'm still confused. I apologize.
It's okay.
Are we making a motion to look into the cost? Because that, you can't make a motion to do an audit if we're investigating costs and getting bids.
Right, okay.
Can I just provide some clarity? So I would suggest the board, if that's their, their, the will of the board, would then to make a motion to direct the business administrator to seek quotes for an operational audit.
Right. And then once we receive, once the quotes would be received, then we could make a decision as to whether we would go through with it? Is that correct?
Yeah, the process would be that if you, when you do get quotes, you would then look at the quotes, see what they include, see what the price is and discuss their respective value and if the board wants to go forward with any of them. They, this would not be a bidding process. You're not looking for linear curbing feat or anything like that. So it's a qualitative assessment as well, but you certainly will see what the price points are. I think that's all contained in what Mrs. Burns is proposing. But yes, to direct the, the business administrator to undertake a quote process is the way to do that logistically.
Mr. Fartan, is that something that we could investigate ourselves as far as our own policy? I don't, I don't know, you know, legal legalities of that or if that would suffice in, if there is a problem to solve the problem?
Are you referring to your board policy or the way in which your district does it? So are you talking about a policy with a capital P or your policies and practices?
Whatever, whichever policy would affect the workings of our transportation department.
You can, you can certainly ask Dr. Tuohy and Mr. Sittadino to report on the operational aspect. As far as your board policy itself, your board policies are, the documents themselves are uniform documents that are used by a couple hundred school districts. So those themselves do not necessarily need review. I think you're talking about implementation.
And as far, as far as the financial part of it goes, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, but there are statistics that are run by the state year after year after year where they compare the efficiency financially of the operation. Is that not true?
Correct. We, we've always been a high performing district as far as efficiency of transportation.
I, I think that, you know, I, I have no problem with procuring estimates for an audit. However, I think what we need to do also is to have a committee meeting. A lot of recommendations need to come out of committee, specifically a committee that deals with transportation. And that's why I figured the best thing right now is to have a committee meeting in October so that we can bring all parties together and vet and discuss what we're looking to do. So at this point, I'm going to schedule something ASAP with Mr. Mara and Mr. Sittadino for- So at this point, I'm going to schedule something ASAP with Mr. Mara and Mr. Sittadino for early October. In the meantime, you know, he can, meaning the business administrator, can go out and get, you know, estimates of what an audit will cost, and maybe we'll have that for a committee meeting, and we can also discuss that then. And then, the committee can make a recommendation to the board regarding inefficiencies or issues with transportation to move forward with the audit. So I think it's a two-pronged approach. Get the prices, have the committee discuss it, and then make a recommendation to the board.
Just to clarify, I think I need a little more guidance in terms of what it is specifically that you want me to get a quote for. So if you can provide me with a little more detail other than the general, because I can't just go outside and get a general quote on an operational audit. I need some more specificity to identify what are the things that we want to... Now, I know you elaborate on some of it, but I think it may be better for us to wait for the committee to determine what it is that you want me to get a quote for, because I need some direction on really, really what you want me to do.
So just to be clear, that the, it would be for access to school events, activities, and transportation regarding students with special needs. That's what the operational audit should cover. So I'm not sure if outside companies would do that, or organizations, if they would charge, how much they would charge?
So I would, again, I don't, I think there is an opportunity in a window to look at that. And I would suggest, as Mr. Dunn's saying, at the transportation committee meeting, you have a little, you have more flexibility to wordsmith something like that that would go into the request for proposals or a quote. And then, that would give Mr. Mara the wording that he's looking for to make sure that it's aligned with what the public's looking for and what you're looking for as a representation of the public, and we can get an accurate depiction.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think because at that meeting, we would have, you know, the Director of Transportation, and, you know, we'd have Dr. Tu, and, you know, everybody could actually have a conversation about how, you know, everything is going, and then we can make the determination then. Is that okay, Mrs. Burns?
Yes, that sounds fine. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. So...
So we're withdrawing the...
Are we withdrawing the motion?
I can withdraw the motion.
Do you want to withdraw the motion pending that committee discussion?
Yep, yes.
Okay, motion's withdrawn.
Okay.
And I'll make arrangements with Mr. Mara to get it on the calendar ASAP so that we don't waste time.
Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mrs. Burns.
Thank you. Okay. Any other new business?
Yes. Simple, nice, easy comment someone made about term limits. I wasn't going to discuss this for at least a year or two from now, but personally, as of now, I kind of like two. Unless for the third term, there's only three people running, and it's basically no choice, then I'd consider three. But that's for now. That's a long time from now to be talking about that. As I've said this before, executive orders aren't laws. They weren't passed by any of the houses of the state government. And we have the proof. I have the film. I can send it to you. Email me, and I'll send you... He even posted on his own social media, he was giving a speech, same thing like this, no plexiglass, no mask at all. And if the board thinks that what I'm doing is wrong and I'm endangering the lives of other people, then we should pass a resolution shaming the governor for doing the exact same thing, because he's a role model for the entire state. I'm a role model for about 60,000 people, and most people probably wouldn't recognize me on the streets anyway, unless you've come to the meetings. But I'm not going to hold it against him. I'm not going to say he should be shamed because he has the right to do whatever he wants, and everyone has the right to decide what they want to do with their own health. He was far away from the toddlers that were wearing the masks and stuff. So the board should consider that. If I'm a bad role model for the citizens of Olbridge, then we should send a message that the governor is a bad role model for the people of New Jersey. I hate to use what-aboutism because it doesn't, it's not logical. It's more of like a comparison, which is bad. Ms. Walsh isn't here, but the people that take AP language and composition, they know they shouldn't be doing what-aboutism. But yep, that's just my opinion, and I will always speak for everyone, even if I don't agree with, like, for example, the audit for the segregated busing. I brought it up because I speak for everyone, and people should have their voices heard, so that's why I brought it up. And I will always answer your emails, and I've always been respectful. I, like I said, I'm not going to shame the governor, and I don't have to shame any other board member. And I just try to do the best for myself and be the best board member I could be. So thank you and good luck. See you on Olbridge Day, maybe. And that's it. Good night.
Anyone else?
Are we using this as the good order, Madam President?
I think we've moved from new business to good of the order. Again, we've morphed. So go ahead.
Okay, so I'll start. First, you know, it's really important to understand Charah Elementary School and the wonderful accolade that they have received, how it came to fruition. Back in 2015, 2016, this Board of Education made it one of its goals to start encouraging our schools to stride for excellence. And we put together a plan, roadmap, that we give our schools the abilities to be able to achieve this outstanding award of being a nationally-recognized blue ribbon school. You know, the Board of Education, over the last seven years, have implemented a lot of good things that have really made inroads with our educational enrichment of our students. And, you know, we try to do our best, and we all, all nine of us up here, believe in doing the right thing for our students. And we may have disagreement, we may have arguments, but ultimately, we're on the same page to ensure that the quality of the education provided by this school district is the finest. And you can see that. It's proof in the pudding. Two years ago, Cheesecake Elementary was named a blue ribbon, and now Charah Elementary. And it takes years for these type of accolades to materialize. I can tell you that Colleen Montori, who was the principal at Charah Elementary going back five years ago, you know, she got this process started, and then it was Trish Barrett, and then it was Courtney Lowery. You know, everyone has played a role. The Assistant Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Hoka, has played a critical role as well. And it's about the whole community coming together to promote success. And I have to say, with character education, with the Board of Education supporting councils in the schools with the RTI programs, you know, we've given the tools and the abilities for our schools to achieve success. And that's something that, you know, we take pride in. And I can tell you that in 2016, it was one of our goals. And I'm proud to say that it has come to fruition with two of our elementary schools. We still have, you know, nine more to go to get them to that plateau, and that's the goal to do. So again, congratulations to the Charah school community, Principal Lowery, all the parents who worked very hard, the administration who put a lot of effort into it, and my fellow board members, because, you know, we set the tone to promote the success and the accolades that we are receiving. Number two is, as many of you know, I am the chief of the fire department here in South Olbridge Township, in South Olbridge. And this morning, we had a fire at 3:30 this morning that adversely affected a wonderful family, a school-community family. And it breaks my heart to see this happen to good people, and I just want to, you know, throw it out there. And I know it's been on social media that, you know, this family lost everything this morning. And they have two young students that go to Salk Middle School, and they are the most respectful and very well-rounded young people I've met in a very long time. As we were putting out the fire and we were finishing up, the two children come up to us to thank us for, you know, putting out the fire and trying to save their belongings. And it made me tear up because here, they've lost everything, and they're thanking us for being out there to try to save their property. You know, it's amazing to see the character and the wonderful, the wonderful abilities of these kids. And, you know, it's a testament of our school district that, you know, we've helped with building character and self-esteem and having these wonderful students. So, you know, Olivia is in the seventh grade at Salk, and Evan is in the eighth grade at Salk School. The Van Dursen family lost everything, and I know that Dave Sittadino, and there's been things on social media. Let's come together. As a township that we are, we give to people in need. And right now, my heart goes out to them, and they made it known to me today at the fire scene that they will be back in school tomorrow because they believe in education. So I just wanted to throw it out there. I know that we're a very giving community, and hopefully, everyone can see to help this family through some difficult times. With that said, thank you so much for everyone attending this evening, and I'll throw it back to Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Would anyone else like to speak? Good of the order, Ms. Ellis-Foster?
Yes, I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out today. And we know it's not always easy to come up and speak in public, but I think everyone came out with passion and the best interest of their students. And hopefully, you heard that we're looking to continue to improve. You know, the district is made up of amazing human beings, and we're all just human. So I think we will continue to improve. There are bumps in the road, unplanned things. You know, last week, there were trees down. There was everything. So, but appreciate everyone coming out to speak and let you know that you've been heard, and hopefully, we can continue to improve. And I think Mr. Dunn kind of summed it up, that as a community, we work together, and there's nothing we can't do. So hopefully, we'll continue to make improvements. Congratulations to Charah. Thank you to the whole staff for making, I think, a successful opening. I know it was long, anticipated by everybody, and I think everyone in the district is truly working the hardest. So I just want to thank everyone for that. And, you know, looking forward to each day getting a little bit better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis-Foster. Anyone else? No? Okay. In the interest of time, I am not going to say anything. I just concur with Ms. Ellis-Foster, Mr. Dunn, and I want to thank everyone for coming out and speaking. We have an executive session.
Yes, sorry. We have an executive session for a personnel issue.
Okay. So I need a motion to go to executive session.
Burns will make the motion.
Dunn will second.
Dunn will second. All in favor?
I...
Sorry.
And just to be clear, the board will not be back out. We'll just adjourn from there.
We will. All right.